Okay Jen, I'm showing that it's noon. Do we, can we start or do we need a couple more minutes?
Jeff, I think you're good to go. This is Mary.
Okay, Mary. Thank you. Welcome everyone to the April 9th, 2021 work session. Today we'll be hearing proposed six penny project for the municipal building renovation. As a standard practice, there will be no questions taken from members of the public. And I understand that Craig La Boy will be making the introduction. So Craig, what I've asked everyone as we've gone through these sessions. Do you want, do you or your colleagues want to take questions? As we go, or would you rather just get through the presentation and then take questions afterwards?
I would prefer to do the questions at the end.
Okay, great. Thank you. And with that, we will turn it over to you then. Please proceed.
Hey, well, thank you for having us. I am Craig La Boy. I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works and in Public Works, we handle facilities. So this would be our area that interested in. This is an assessment of the city building. I'd just like to make mine a little brief. I'll, I'll give you a little thought of when I came here as a newcomer 12 years ago. I remember pulling in for the job interview and looking up and thinking it was the county jail. Just from the aesthetics of it with the lacking of windows, it looked very, very blocky and not well appealing. As well as the building is a good structural building, some of the appearance was a little lacking. And I remember coming in also and doing my job interview and as I exited, it kind of made me feel like I was back in the eighties, reminding of the ashtray that was still located in the bathroom. The finish then was starting to wear off. Even smelling the smoke still stained in the, in the hallways that just probably was their smoking area. So with that personal story, I would, I would say that the building's got good bones. There's a lot left in this building is just lacking any attention in the last 40 years. That probably needs to be brought up into city standards. It's lacking a lot of ADAs that our consultant will point out to you. It's, it's way behind its time and in the IT department with the electrical and HVAC. Though sometimes if the wind blows, you smell a little bit of natural gas that's minor, but it's, it's there. There's some definite need to give this a shine. To hopefully welcome other people that want to come like I did this 12 years ago to want to be part of this team. And help us sell the city of Cheyenne on be part of this team too and be a resident. But with that said, we contacted Winters Griffith to do a little 10,000 foot overview on some of the deficiency that this building's accumulated over the years. Well, he'll present that in a minute. So I would like to introduce Ansley, is me Ansley Mao and Amy Winters and he'll be walking you through.
Got to push the button first. Thank you, Craig. And thank you Chairman Jeff White. We asked to look at this facility assessment and we've done a number of these for, for many other entities and agencies, hospitals, other county type structures such as this. And whenever looking at an older building, it's hard to judge that for, you know, when the age it was built, there were certain codes and, and construction standards in place at that time. So with that said, our facility assessment, we have to compare that as if we were to construct that building today to modern construction standards and modern code. So as we go through this, there's, there's just things that we point out that these are elements that maybe need to be addressed imminently. Maybe there need to be done meet code and would be required to do so under any sort of renovation. So with that said, we were trying to advance a slide here. So for our facility assessment objectives, like I said, we looked at code violations. And primarily our focus was life safety as the, there's the primary priority that we looked at as, and then there's other codes that come in. The international building code. And then as far as accessibility, that, that's really addressed within the building code and with the ADA act. And, and so we, we looked through the ADA as if we were to obstruct that today with our, with our new ability standards. And then our fourth or third bullet point here is security. Security is interesting and we'll dive into that, that there's, there's, there needs to be a fine balance between security and what the, what the needs are for the public and for the staff. We looked at that. And you know, really the objective of this is what is the cost? And, and we'll dive into that, that I, at the end of this, we present two costs. One of those is if we were to just dive right in and do this remodel in a single phase, or if the occupants, if the city departments were to stay in the building during that construction, then what does that look like? And what does that, that, that cost equate to? So because costs are directly related to the length of constructions. Again, the facility assessment, we, we looked at the exterior conditions, life safety, accessibility. Turning internally into the building systems, we, we looked at the mechanical, the structural, the electrical, the, the technology upgrades that are needed and as well as the, the air quality and all of those equate to the occupant wellness. So what did we find and possible some fixes? Starting with the exterior, our experience with other projects in Cheyenne show that new construction renovations require the project to meet Cheyenne's Uniform Development Code. And, and, and looking at those standards and applying that to this block that, that I was at the city council and the city offices and the adjacent parking lot, we found that this block stands out from some of the adjacent blocks that have been brought up to the UDC standards. An aerial view clearly shows that the, the UDC compliant setbacks, buffer zones, internal landscaping are found along the three adjacent blocks and surrounding blocks around the, around the neighborhood. But the, the current city block still has some of the, the previous, you know, sidewalks right up against the curb along the street. The pavement, you can see on the photos on the right, the, the newly paved parking lot doesn't have any internal landscaping that, that is required per the UDC. And so these photos on the right, the top photos are showing what the city owned lot block appears today. And then across the street with the appropriate UDC compliant setbacks, buffer zones, landscaping, going internally into the building. Here. The, like I said, the, the life safety is really the, the most important priority that we apply to these facility assessments. And any code review, we start with what is the, the, the type of building, the construction type, the use type. This building is primarily a business occupancy, but the room I'm sitting in today, the council chambers is, is, is a large assembly type occupancy. And per the code, we could not build this building today without a fire sprinkler system and an upgraded fire alarm system. Per the building code, the max allowed building area is 23,000 square feet for this type of structure. And currently this building's over 55,000 square feet. So any sort of renovation should trigger that enforcement of a full automatic fire sprinkler system throughout the building as well as the upgraded fire alarm system. Egress components, we looked at corridors and egressing out in the event of a fire, we need to compartmentalize the building with firewalls and areas of refuge. And a lot of that comes down to the, the getting, you know, occupants out of the building safely. And so looking at like the stairwells, what this photo show, the, the handrails and guardrails are no longer compliant. Today's standards require those guardrails to be 42 inches high. And the, and the reason for that is in, you know, mass exodus, worst case scenario panic situation. Those guardrails, people rushing down the stairs, they need to be high enough so somebody doesn't get pushed over. Those are any sort of renovation, like I said, would trigger that we install code compliant guardrails. And then the handrails really come into play also with the accessibility. These, these guardrails don't provide the, the right code compliant handrails for, for grasping for anybody that needs help assistance going down the stairs. On the right, we got, we got photos of the front doors. What these, these are code compliant if they're unlocked and, and they, you know, remain open for occupants to egress out of. I know we'll get into the security concerns, but as soon as we, we try to lock these down for security at, at certain times, then, then we're really limiting the egress ability of those doors. So, so these new, all the exit doors just need to be looked at as far as from a, not only from security, we don't, we don't want maybe people coming in at the wrong time, but we still need to allow that egress out. The next for ADA compliance, the ADA really puts priority on creating the, the travel path for any occupants from, from the street where they're, where they're parking and fully candy, handicap accessible parking stalls, path up to the building and then through the building. So for, for this building being multi-story, the elevators really come into play to be a, be a requirement for accessibility. These elevators are in need of modernization. They don't have the, the proper controls and, and, and certain heights. They're, they're functional for elevators. They certainly allow somebody in a wheelchair to access the upper floors. But again, a, a full modern, modernization of the elevators is required to bring it up to full code compliant. Going on, we got the drinking fountains. It, within the ADA, they list drinking fountains and, and telephones. Back in the day before everybody carried a, a cell phone, but drinking fountains and cell phones are required within that path of travel. There are elements required in a festival route of, of travel. We found many of the drinking fountains are either mounted at the wrong height or they project too far out into the corridor. Any, there, there's, there's multiple types of disabilities. And so anybody with a visually impaired, these, any, any element such as drinking fountain or tissue dispenser or any sort of signage can't project out into a path of travel more than four inches. So modern construction, we have to put the drinking fountain into some sort of alcove just, or, or there's got to be some sort of obstruction to keep a visually impaired person from running into the, the drinking fountain. And, and so we found that many of those, pretty much all of those in the building were non-compliant as far as height or, or for clearances. Signage, another important aspect of the ADA path of travel is the proper signage. We noted many stairs and, and doors and exits and restrooms do have signage. They're just not fully compliant with, with the, the current ADA standards for what those signs should appear. So here's an example of your third floor stairs next to a, a compliant stair symbol. It needs to have the pictogram as well. Door weights, the, the door, doors need to be less than five pounds, be able to pull open a door. We found a few doors that are, that far exceed that. They're, they were frankly, they were struggle to open for an able-bodied person. So it, it just needs some, this needs some adjustments or new operators. Possibly new door, new hinges. So that, that, you know, those are, those are things that come into play as if you're in, in need of opening the door and your, your challenge. ADA bathrooms. The, again, within that path of travel is, is restrooms is, is an item that's, that's required for the, the ADA and the, the staff have done a good job of, of retrofitting the existing footprints of the bathrooms as best as they can. To be fully compliant is going to take some infrastructure, maybe a deletion of a stall in order to make the adjacent stalls larger. We've noted that, that many of the stalls are close, but they're not fully ADA compliant. For example, this photo here, it, it does have grab bars installed, but per the latest Nancy code for the ADA, we need a vertical grab bar installed as well. The toilet paper dispenser is mounted too far forward from the front edge of the toilet. Again, it's, it's there. It's just slightly out of compliance. But these are the things that, that, you know, when you go through there that are very strictly regulated within the ADA. And, and we found that, that many of these are, are close or just not quite right. And a lot of that's due to the existing footprint of the building just doesn't allow for. Lab, same with lavatory standards, sinks have been lowered over time to make them more accessible or raised. The example here shows a, a raised sink and lavatory, but notice the, the bare pipes underneath those drains require a scald guard protection. It's insulation over the pipe for anybody with a wheelchair to be rolling underneath and not getting scalded on their, on their knees when they roll under. The, the lowered lavatory on the left doesn't have the proper roll under clearance. You know, it's lowered, it's at the right height. But it doesn't allow somebody in a, in a wheelchair to be able to roll underneath. So and then elsewhere, some of the, some of the single water closets we found throughout the building. I'm not sure if they're original or they're modified later, but many of the, the, the water closets, the toilets are far too low. The ADA requires those to be a much higher seat height. So it makes it easier for somebody to get on and off. You also notice the, the, the sink in that restroom there also does not have the, the proper knee, knee clearance to roll underneath. Protruding objects, again, that's the, such as this dispenser in, within a pathway that we can't have any of these protruding objects beyond four inches. We, this is a common thing. I mean, that we, we need to get tissue paper dispensers within the restrooms. But if it's in the pathway, then it's, it's just got to have a less than four inches. So typically we need a new construction, we would have to recess that into the wall halfway. From a security standpoint, I know that's something the, the city's doing modifications now currently trying to make a, a building more secure. These are things that often can be accomplished with technology, new hardware, electronics and cameras. Like the, the image on the right is a, is a stair egress door. That, that panic bar meets egress, it's, it's the original panic bar for somebody going down the stair, but after some discussions and, and other building types like this, typically we want to have your, your exiting stairwells one direction. So if somebody's exiting the door, they can hit that panic bar and get into the stairwell. But they wouldn't be able to go to other levels of the floor of, of the building. So that would, that would require a, a, a different type of, and actually a electronic panic bar. So we could lock it down from, from the stairwell at certain times maybe. So a lot of those things can be accomplished. It just requires some infrastructure in place and power to that, that doorway to provide the right technology. Same with the secure entries. We noted some of these doors have key card access. Some were functional, some were not, you know, through, through different renovations. Maybe some areas are no longer needed to be secure. But we didn't, we didn't find much consistency. Same with the, the main entry. I know that there's, there needs to be some discussions of, of how secure is this building? The, the way the, the world's going is, is just like we did with your municipal court building. That occupants are able to come in the building, get out of the elements. But before they pass any further, there's some sort of checkpoint and, and what does that checkpoint look like? And there's everything from, you know, just a camera and a telephone, or there's a security guard, you know, there's, there's a lot of discussion that needs to be had for that front entry. And most of those come back to how is the architecture affect occupants coming in? What's, what is the, what's the visual cue that you want to be showing to the public? Is, is this a very secure institution? Or is it opening and welcoming to the public to come in, but still in a secure manner? Same with the public generation, interaction then at the counters. This is the treasurer's counter, for example, and, and we've got some Plexiglas put in for COVID. But it's not a very secure environment for the staff at, at the treasurer's office. And, and certain departments require additional security than others. But again, it's, it's a balance between secure for the staff and the occupants, but also having being able to have that, that, that public interaction. Now welcoming experience. Yes, thank you. And the same with the corridor. So you come in the main door and you're greeted with sterile corridors, typically in new construction. Now we're, we're, we're putting in windows so we can, so there's visual cues for the public to know where to go. They can see, maybe they can see the treasurer's office or, or some of these other departments, but then there's also the staff able to see into the corridor. So without, without having to install cameras everywhere, this building's poor at being able to have visual connection both for the public coming in as well as for the staff to be, keep an eye on some of these hidden areas. Looking at the architectural elements of the building, the, the roof, this is a ballasted membrane roof. It was original on the building. It's, it's been replaced and repaired over time. But this type of this system of roof, although inexpensive to install is, has been generally phased out in all other instances that these, these create lakes that are hard to find and track down. And it's just a, it's a, actually have increased maintenance costs with this type of roof. Although it, it does offer good hail protection. But generally this age and type of building, a ballasted roof has been phased out a number of years ago. And now we would see a, a more of a, a, a single membrane roof. Around the perimeter, we noted many of the, the glass windows, the curtain wall system. Some of the seals are broken down over time. They physically kind of rattle and shake it sometimes when the wind blows. We've noted a lot of dust that's able to blow in. Again, these just come down to they're, they're over 40 years old. They just need some, some maintenance and new gaskets and seals. Possibly a new frame replacement. The age of the building, the exterior walls and, and the roof had very limited amount of insulation. So this photo here is an, an office and you could feel the wall is just cold the day we were here. That's due to the, the very limited insulation again that the, you know, and this was constructed in 1979. That's just, that was standard for that type. Construction at that time that we, we're not able to do that now to meet energy codes. Exterior maintenance, we noted a few items. I mean, it's primarily a brick building. There might need some tuck pointing in a few areas, but pretty much the, the, like Craig said, the building has good bones. It's good, good condition. We did note a few areas that the exterior steel is starting to rust. That this is over the entryway. This is a steel lintel that holds the brick above. So it's a structural element that was painted originally and due to the way it was designed, the, the water is, is cascades down the wall and gathers on the bottom of this lintel. That's, it's, it's just an example. We found there was others elsewhere, but we just need some maintenance on, on some of the items on the exterior. Moving interior, some of the architectural elements, we noted many, many conference rooms, offices have been built in over time and built above the carpet and below the ceiling tiles. And that leads to poor acoustic separations. We've, I've been in meetings here and you can hear people next door. We've noted, we talked to a few managers and, and they're not able to have the right conversations in their offices because they can, they know they can hear their staff outside their office. So again, if this was constructed new, but we would take a lot of those walls to the structure above, have those acoustically separated. So we're not having some of those privacy concern. The entry walk off, this is a, a, you know, it looks like a minor issue, but it, it's this vestibule. It's a tiny little walk off mat on the original. We would recommend that the full vestibule have a, a, a walk off entry type of system. That way you're shedding the, the dirt and debris and the water and the moisture. And that really helps your interior finishes, the longevity. Again, storefront systems, like I already mentioned, there's, there's a lot of, we found a couple of windows that the seals, the actual insulated window units or seals have broken down over time. Now condensation develops on the inside. So we know we've lost that insulating ability of those windows. As I noted, the building's 42, 43 years old now. This type of civic structure, concrete construction, brick exterior, we would expect it to last this time. I mean, it, it, it's, it's got good bones. It's a good, highly well-built structure, but we're, we're quickly approaching the time that it's going to require some more maintenance than, than renovations than what has taken place. At some point, the, the maintenance costs far outweigh your return on investment. If there was new HVAC systems, electrical system throughout, it, it's really approaching the end of its lifespan without having some major capital renewal. And, and, and that's typical for, for this age of building on, on any structure. Looking at the original plans, the, the building, like I said, it's, it's concrete. It's wide open, structurally has very few columns. So it's very adaptable. I mean, we could, we could be able, or you would be able to renovate that and but the corridors where you wanted to, I mean, there's, there's different ways. Maybe, maybe there's a center stair that's added in. But the, but the original structure of it allows for some adaptability. So looking at the mechanical systems, that again, they're 40 some years old. I understand some elements, the boilers have been replaced in the last four or five years. I understand the, some elements, the boilers have been replaced in the last four or five years. But the the actual mechanical systems themselves are still original and intact, original to the building. It was designed for a more open plan system. And over time, you know, as as one department moves in, another moves out, we, we've noted some walls put up and maybe the HVAC system wasn't properly balanced or modified. I understand the city's working on some of those items right now. But from, from my experience and looking at this building, like there's a need for a thorough HVAC retrofit and and look at a different system to make this more energy efficient. Structurally, there, there's a few large cracks on the exterior of the building. Those have been surveyed and monitored for a number of years now. I, I understand they haven't, they haven't gotten any larger. My concern is that there's new exterior pavement on the, and that on the west side. And there's a similar crack that points directly to the wall crack. Though I think there could still be some foundational issues in that area that needs to be addressed. I would recommend having, I mean, that looked at again by a structural engineer that can do some subsurface exploration, just so that doesn't expand. Electrical, again, with the age of the building and and different uses coming in and different, different needs and different offices and layouts. There's to be expected, there's going to be some electrical that needs to be run on the surface. This instance kind of creates a tripping hazard. But we found many instances of this, that the the building's been retrofitted as best as it can with minor modifications. The the six light switches, obviously, there's, it just points to modifications over time that wasn't done holistically. As far as code requirements, some of the panel clearances around the, around electrical panels. Again, original to the building, there are hydronic piping and water pipes directly above very large electrical panels. That's no longer meets code. That, that's just one drip away from a, from a fire. And it's not an easy way to address that. Again, that was, that was part of the original design, doesn't meet code today. Insufficient technology. I, this is something that, again, with a 40-year-old building and and modern times and in the, in the times of Zoom calls and and council meetings, technology is, is one of those that it's sometimes easy to change. And sometimes it's, it's, we end up with wires across the floor. And we just noted a few things that definitely, if there was a renovation, we could have some of this technology built in and and more flexible for for different offices and meeting rooms. Yeah, and for the general public to watch, watch this meeting. We had a, we had a couple of technology issues get today, but overall current conditions, you know, we've, we've noted a few different finishes, different carpets throughout. Obviously, the, there's some stains, we need some carpet replacement. The the center one on the top is an ashtray. It just points to the age of the building. We had to clarify what that was to some of our younger partners, what an ashtray in the building used to look like. The carpet on the right, the the light carpet is where a wall used to be. And the field carpet was changed. And then when the wall came down, you still have the light carpet. So it's, it just points to some of these renovations have been done, not holistically, or or just been taking place over time. The major issues is is like in the restrooms and corridors, that the tile and the the metal partitions, the the actual finishes are rubbed raw. It's, it's been cleaned far too many times. It can't, you can't get it any cleaner. It's, it's lot, it's starting to rust. It's lost its ability to to be properly cleaned. And that's common in pretty much all of the original restrooms that we found. Wayfinding, again, being a member of the public coming in, there is signage, but it's sometimes it's hard to get directed to where you need to go. Again, that lack of visibility, you, you, as an architect, you don't, you don't have to just fix it with a sign. A lot of times, we try to design so when somebody comes in, they can see where they need to go without having to intuitively, without having to read a sign or three on the way to where they need to go. Brake rooms, we noted many death brake rooms are undersized or are in their offices. Don't have proper ADA compliant configurations in many of those brake rooms. Storage throughout, we we found many storage rooms that maybe aren't fire rated. They weren't originally storage rooms, or we found storage in places that that weren't, that shouldn't be storage rooms. So there's clearly a, a need for some additional building storage. And walking through apartment by department, it was really apparent that some departments have an excess of space. And, and they have large, open spaces between workstations. And you move into the next one and it's, and it's, it's very cramped. And they're, you know, just depends on staffing and department needs change over time. I get that. But there, there's, there's definitely a wide range when you walk through department by department. And so that that internal organization and re, you know, a master plan of sorts would would benefit. So looking to the future, what we suggest is, you know, looking at the building updates and and the workplace environments, not only for your, your staff and your public coming in, but offering a safe and secure building to work and to come access city department. So these are, these are some of the points we just talked about. Providing fire protection system, meeting accessibility standards, providing employees with sufficient support spaces and workspaces, proper indoor air quality. So so everything that we just talked about in an upcoming renovation could be accomplished with our, with our estimates of cost coming up. Yeah, proper indoor lighting, getting, there's, there's windows in this room that, you know, that we can't see outside. I went, we'd noted that when we talked to pretty much every staff member, that some offices have windows to the exterior, but most do not. And and that's just the way that the, in the 1970s, a lot of buildings were were built without too many windows. But it's definitely a, a large issue for for most of the staff. We prepared some opinions of cost. In front of you is, is two numbers. And we bolded that, we have those bulks, we know everybody wants to see what the numbers are. Before I dive into what, where we came up with those numbers and how we estimate those, on the left is for a single phase renovation. And on the right is multi-phase. And from our experience, and we have, we have a current project with a, with a similar county agency right now, that we can save the, the, or any project, we can save lots of expenses, and more importantly, a lot of time if the contractor is able to renovate any structure at a single time. There's less mobilizations, they're able to get in and work on all floors, not work nights and weekends, not work around, you know, one department, be quiet next door to one department that's still operating. So if the, if the building was turned over for construction in a single phase, that's the cost on the left. In a multi-phase, you, you have multiple mobilization. So that, that the framer's coming back multiple times. Each time you're moving one department, there's increased move cost. And that, that increase in construction schedule increases the cost. It is, is a direct relationship to that. So I, we have prepared a report for the council members, a much longer report. So this PowerPoint, I should have mentioned that at the front. This PowerPoint just kind of a reduced summary. In the report, we have multi-page breakdown of of how these costs are generated. And again, as as similar of your other presentations this week and last week, these are 2021 estimates. It, it's hard to say where construction costs are going in the future. I would definitely add 5% minimum escalation per year. I know how some of these six penny, the duration of these, by the time construction actually starts, might be two, three years out from now. And so again, these are just $20, $21. But the the, the point I wanted to make is that there's, there is large millions of dollars that could be saved if the, if the city was that some of the departments relocated to other city-owned property or possibly leased or purchased some other facility in order to, just for temporarily move out. And so that's where these numbers were. Why is this important? I think Craig, Craig touched on it. Some of that is, is the visibility, you know, is a, is a potential staff coming here as the public coming here for interaction with their city offices. What is that public impression? So I, I, I believe that's, you know, the the main goal of this is, is trying to increase that customer service. And, you know, we want to meet code, we want to meet the life safety needs. But it's really, you know, what is, what is the public's impression when they come here and come to to the city offices? And looking at the building going through here, we've noted most of the changes have been reactive. And to to issues, you know, when the boilers are going down, they replace the boilers. But looking ahead, you know, this building's 40 years old. If you want it to last another 40 years, there, there's upcoming, needs to be a proactive approach and a systematic remodel that that looks holistically, not only from a building standpoint, but also a functional standpoint from, from the departments and, and how they interact and interact with each other and interact. Turning it over to you, counsel, if you have any questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Winters. I think kind of what you presented today has been something that we've all been hearing about for some time. Much appreciated. With that, I'll take questions from my colleagues.
Mr. President, Tom Seagrave.
Mr. Seagrave.
At the 23.9 million, that's $435 a foot. If we assume by the time it's all done, we'd spend at least 25 million. That's $455 a square foot to renovate. I would advocate we build new. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, that Royball.
Mr. Royball and then Dr. Aldridge.
And what would, what would it cost to basically scrape the building and build new? Something else, would it be under that 23 million or be just off the cuff?
To you through Jeremy. Would we be looking at the exact same square foot, 55,000 square feet? Like, we're just replacing this en masse?
Well, you know, with this COVID, we've seen that with a lot of the offices, when people working from home really didn't decrease productivity. So I'm thinking, do we need 55,000 square feet?
So the answer to that, if the, if the yes and no, if we're replacing like for like another 55,000 square feet in the same place, it would definitely cost more than just renovating this, this building. So, you know, like I said, there, we would be keeping the foundation, the shell, the building intact and and just renovating the interior. So if we're building new, that we have, we have demolition costs. And then starting from scratch would definitely cost more if we're replacing the same 55,000. If it's less, then it would certainly be reflective. Thank you.
Interesting question. Thank you, Mr. Royball. Dr. Aldridge?
Good afternoon, President White. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you okay. I hope you're not driving and and talking.
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm parked in Cody for this call.
See that, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, first and foremost, I'm curious as to whether we've done a space need study. I put a note in the chat that I actually have been doing some auditing for ADA compliance for anyone who receives US education dollars this week in the Cody Powell area. And that's, once we start down that road, it's all or nothing. I mean, basically, we have to comply completely. So I'm, I'm not convinced personally that we actually need to need this kind of space we've had, much to Mr. Royball's point, because our staff and faculty, our staff have proven that we don't necessarily need to have everybody working in offices. And so we also have some other space available with the second floor of the courthouse, the third floor of the public safety building. I think we are putting in the cart before the horse. I think we need to do a space study. And so that would be my recommendation is that we actually determine what kind of space we actually need before we make a decision like this. That would be my input.
Thank you, Dr. Aldridge. And I think as you and I are both state employees, that's kind of something that it seems all agencies have been asked to, to do by the legislature after the past year, where a lot of folks have been working from home. Other questions?
Mr. President, Seagrave.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes, I wondered if I could ask the consultant, without scraping the lot, leaving the building where it is, building on new dirt, and don't include the land cost. We've got potential locations. What would a new 50,000, 55,000 square foot building cost without the dirt? I can't believe it would be 450 bucks a foot, but maybe I'm wrong.
And and again, in the, in our full report, that's going to be, I understand will be sitting on your desk when you, when you come in to look at that, we have the breakdown for those construction costs. So to to clarify, the, the 400, it actually is $434 per square foot for the total project. Now, that includes possible study, architectural engineering, design fees. It includes financing costs, some moving costs, furniture. There's, there's, we, we looked at it from a total construction cost. And again, applied some factors in there, knowing how the six penny, it wouldn't, it's probably, it's not going to be 20, $21. We, we did, you know, have some factors on that. So, so they are high. The actual construction cost, the hard construction cost is without any alternate. So there's, there's further discussions. Do we add more windows to the building? Do we, there's, what is the security? So these are conservative numbers. But taking out all the alternates, the actual construction that that we show for a single phase is 17 million. So considerably less just for the hard construction. So that, that's $309 per square foot, just for, just for construction costs that you might be looking at. Your, your next, your other question about putting in a full new building here, I think, again, we'd have to talk more and figure out what that, what that is and where that is before I would want to give a number. These construction costs, the detailed breakdown, I have visited with two general contractors that are large that do this type of construction throughout the state. Independently, I had two different contractors help me with this cost assessment and prepare it. So I am, I stand by these numbers.
Mr. President.
Mr. Seagrave.
Again, I think if if we're serious about this renovation, I, I really think we need to also look at new construction. I think we can do it a lot cheaper than what we're talking about renovating. And the costs for moving employees and doing that type of thing would be the same regardless. So when you tear into an old building like this and you talk about putting in all, you know, new windows and if the, the costs are prohibitive, it's just so much, it's much cheaper to to build new. And I think we owe it to the public to take a hard look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seagrave. Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Again, in the report, the very last page, we have recommended next steps. And that is to do a building program evaluation. Just as you, you were discussing, that, that, that really is our next recommended steps as well. Kind of figure out systematically what, what type of space needs a city would need.
Great. Thank you. Dr. Rennie, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Laborn, Mayor Collins, any questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Laborn.
Well, this is a fascinating and long-overwaited analysis. I think what occurs to me here is the use of space. Now apartments look at distant work. They think the desk or a cubicle here and yet still be able to work home elsewhere. I think that's. Gosh, I, I'm right next to the microphone, so.
Yes, I, I see that you are next to the microphone, but for some reason you are cutting out a little bit. So I'm not sure what the problem is. Just, I guess, do your best and we'll try to muddle through.
Okay, well, that is obviously important information due to the fact that the train is on the track and it is running to that November special. I mean, I don't want to rush anything. I want to make an informed decision. But question not to the architects, but to the members of the council and the mayor, is how do we bring these various elements together to make an informed decision? And when we're looking at that 55 million that the county suggested our portion of that upcoming ballot, this is a basic key question. I'm not sure that we really understand how more than just the construction cost or the phasing. It's about how we operate. So certainly appreciate this information. I look forward to reviewing it and attempting to determine what we need to do. But obviously, personally, I believe it would be a big mistake for us to proceed without serious answers and a facility that our staff can work in and public can interact with us. So a difficult decision, but I think there are elements of it that we bring in here that are architectural, are service. So that, my concern, I'd also point out that my opinion, the, whatever we do or however we do it at the Basin Civic Center is, bears on this question well. So obviously, we had some estimates from them that were pretty high beyond our capability. And I certainly don't want to be doing a, a patch, isn't going to last. But this suggests that we're going to need a lot more than our, our session. Forward to that. Thank you.
Or other, thank you, Mr. Laborn. Other comments or questions? Dr. Rennie, Mayor Collins, Mr. Escobal, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, President, I do have a question. It's Councilman Escobal.
Mr. Escobal.
I was wondering if we're under any timeline constraints with making the building up to code where the plumbing and electrical are concerned.
I'm, I'm not sure. Anyone on the panel?
As far as a, a timeline to get some of these code deficient items fixed now? If I understand correctly, is that, that the question?
Yeah.
No, you know, there's, there is things that I see are, it's all about risks. So there are some items that we found that have larger risks than others. But as far as somebody enforcing that and, and requiring you to update some of these things, I'm not aware of any. I mean, anybody else in town, it would be the, the city building department to be, and fire department to be enforcing that. So I think the short answer is no. I don't, I don't think you have any, it's grandfathered in right now. It's, it's kind of when you go in and touch it, then you're, you trigger some things. But, but that doesn't mean there's not some liability or risks or not doing that work. You know, the fire protection system, you know, that's a big item that probably should be done in the near future, just because that is such a, a liability to not have that in, in this size of building.
Thank you. And I see Mr. O'Donnell has his hand raised. And I was going to get your thoughts, Mr. O'Donnell, because I know what a important role you played in the renovation of the Capitol Building. So you've been through major projects like this before, and I certainly wanted to hear from you as well. So please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. This, this is to add on to the answer you just got. That there are narrower questions about safety that sort of stand on their own. But the broader legal question that in terms of risk has to do with the Department of Justice and compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. We are clearly grossly out of compliance and at risk of a DOJ lawsuit that would require immediate renovation of the building and bringing it up to complete compliance with the ADA. DOJ typically will allow a municipality some latitude if the municipality has a plan on how to renovate or replace the building and is attacking that plan, actually making progress on it. Absent that kind of an effort, DOJ is historically very unsympathetic to concerns about cost and will go to US District Court, get an order requiring immediate compliance. That, it seems to me, financially speaking, is the greatest risk the city faces. And the best way to ameliorate that is to develop and adopt a plan that we move forward on.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Any other comments or questions?
If, if I could add to that real quick, Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Winters.
In front of me, I printed out in case that, that topic did come up. He's, he's absolutely correct. And there's the ADA Act passed in 1990. There's, there's Title II, and then there's Title III. And as a, a public entity such as a state, county, city agency, you fall under the Title II guidelines. And under the Title II, I believe, I'm not, not the attorney, but in there, there's strict language that you have two years to comply from when that act passed to create such a plan. And that was, that was many decades ago.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we adjourn this work session?
Mr. President, Councilman Escobal again.
Mr. Escobal.
And, and based on those statements, is going to the voters in this next six penny considered a plan? And should the voters not agree with that plan and vote it down? What, what position does that leave the city in at that point?
Looks like Mr. O'Donnell has his hand raised again. So, Mr. O'Donnell, we'll go to you.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The short answer is tough. The law does not care whether the voters approve the, the funding or not. The obligation still exists.
Thank you. Any other questions before we adjourn? We're hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Winters. Thank you to your staff. Thank you, Mr. Lavoy, and to your staff for coming to us today. I know it's a, it's always tough with this six penny. We, we have a limited amount of funds that we can ask the voters to approve. And always the requests are more than, than what we can afford given statute. So much appreciate the informed report. And I look forward to reviewing the hard copy that we've been presented with. And everyone, have a nice weekend. Thank you. We are adjourned.